Good evening. I'd like to call the ZBA meeting of October 1st, 2024 to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, Stella.
I'd just like to note the emergency exits, the door that you came in and the doors at either end of the hall here in front and behind us. So first, I'd just like to review the minutes for August 2024. Has everyone had the opportunity to do that? All right, so we'll go ahead and have a vote on those.
Make a motion to accept.
Can I make a motion to accept?
Seconded, you got it.
Roll call, vocal.
Aye.
Aye.
Stella?
Aye.
All right. All right. All right. So first item on the agenda is continuation of Jet Management area variance. Applicant is seeking an area variance to convert a commercial multi-use into apartment living space. Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B requires a minimum area of interior living space of 800 square feet. Apartment A is 634 square feet. Apartment B is 486 square feet. And Apartment C is 655 square feet. Applicant is seeking relief from this area and bulk requirement with a positive referral from the planning board.
Yeah, this matters currently before the planning board. It was determined to be a type 2 under Seeker. It's a reuse of an existing building with no additional footprint. It's in the town center zoning district, which actually the rest of the town requires a minimum accessory apartment of 400 square feet. This particular zoning district happens to require 800 square feet. It's the only zoning district within the town that require, makes that requirement. And the applicant is seeking relief from that requirement under the zoning district and seeking an area variance for three apartments.
Good evening, everybody. William Basharat, I'm representing the owner, Jimmy Traynor, he's right here with me. We've been here a couple of times already. I apologize, last time I was out of the country, so I wasn't able to attend. As I'm going to just again summarize what we spoke about at the very beginning, the grand meeting criteria is to be eligible to get the variance. This situation that we have over here, we are seeking a variance from a requirement by the town of 800 square foot per apartment, which is technically only a town requirement. New York State Building Code does not require that. The building as it exists right now, it's basically 2,100 square foot building. To have the three units that meet that criteria is an impossibility without putting an addition on the building. At this point, the reason why we go in this route because of the hardship, this building has been sitting for quite a while, maintained, it was cleaned. I mean, we have pictures that show what it was before and the neighbors seen it. It was basically like a junkyard. And we've been trying to rent it as commercial. We prefer to rent it as a commercial. It makes more sense, it's more better income, but it's impossible. It's been a couple of years without anybody looking. We had one tenant looking at it, potential tenant, which is biker's club. You know, they want to hold their meetings in there with the motorcycles. And he said absolutely no way on earth, I'd rather keep empty. So we, the only option for this to make it viable and make it economically feasible for the owner of the building is to do it in three apartments, which there are need, there's a lot of need for apartments in the town. In order for it to do that, there are three spaces already existed and they were divided. And that's the reason why they're different in sizes. To go with that, this is the size that we have. We went to the planning board and the planning board brought to our attention that it's 800 square foot requirement. And we said, okay, we will seek relief from the zoning board. I, my understanding that at the last meeting, something came up about converting the two apartments into one apartment. Okay, and with that said, the third apartment still will need a variance, but there's no way I can meet the criteria of 800 square foot per apartment. I don't have the square footage of the entire building. It's impossible. Okay, and with, you know, we looked at it. Before I get into the financial feasibility of it, let me cover up the situation. There are other apartments in the neighborhood. So converting this building into that will not create a hardship or make the building indifferent or non-conforming with the neighborhood. You know, there is the desired, could this be achieved without a variance? It really can't be. No matter how we slice it, we are going to need a variance, one sort or another. The, is the variance substantial? It depends how you look at it. It's really, is it substantial, is it not substantial? It's not a situation where we're saying we want to be like five feet from the property line where the requirement is 25 feet. It's a situation where even with the variance, those apartments will be comfortable apartments. They will not, people will not be cramped in. And if they are also be geared towards a young couple or a single person. It's a busy road. If we have a bigger apartment with multiple bedrooms, we attract them kids and families. Okay, that's the only one that has needs for multi-bedrooms. Okay, so having three apartments that caliper, and there is a need for affordable housing or in the area, not only in this town, but in all the towns. The state's trying to mandate it in many of the counties that you must create it. I mean, this is our best thing, you know, in summers, what have you. So many buildings got approved as long as you put apartments on, you know, because of the mandate of the town. So being comparable with the neighborhood and not creating a hardship on anybody else in the neighborhood is really one of the things that we have over here. There's no adverse impact on the environmental anything because we're not doing any construction except interior work. The exterior is maintained, is kept, the lawn is cut, everything. I mean, I'm sure you've passed by that building many times. I've seen what shape it's in. Is the alleged hardship self-created? It's not really self-created because it's been two years trying to rent it. We can't go nowhere with it. You know, I mean, how much longer could somebody say, okay, I'm gonna sit and pay in out-of-pocket, pay in out-of-pocket? Brings me back to the idea of converting it to two apartments, which still would need a variance for the other apartment. We did a breakdown of the cost of holding on to the building and what it is right now, what kind of negative impact on it, where it would be with two apartments and where would be with the three apartments. You know, I have copies here, I'm gonna submit to the board. Show it. I have a copy.
We'll look at them, that's okay. Right there?
Yeah.
You're all right, thank you so much.
So, you know, with that said, can I ask a question?
It's a pre-existing, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You know, looking at that breakdown of the schedule, with the three apartments, this building will have an income, a positive income of $10,000, which is a decent return on the investment. Now, this is over here is being optimistic, considering that there's no downtime. Okay, there's no breakdown in a boiler or a heating system or anything to be repaired. This is considering that the units will be rented year-round with no downtime. There's no change between one tenant and another where for two months they're gonna be rented. So the income of $10,000 a year is really extremely reasonable, but it's not guaranteed because, you know, we get one tenant changing. By the time they leave, you clean up the place and rent it, it's gonna be two months out. There's $3,000 out of that, you know, the bottom line for the year. So when it's all said and done, it's a matter of economics here. We have a letter from a realty holding company here. I don't know if the board received it. It was addressed to the Town of Beekman zoning board. I don't know if you have this copy, we made one copy of it. One of the neighbors saying that there's a need for it, what have you. We have no idea who the person is, but we appreciate their support. Like I said, it was addressed to the zoning board. Again, we have a couple of the neighbors who really showed verbal support for this and saying, yeah, we do need it and we welcome it in the neighborhood. I understand the town wants to create a downtown area, build it up into commercial, excuse me. This will be in the future. I mean, if this building is gonna be in a positive income, it could be refinanced. And definitely, there's no way on earth why it should not be expanded upon and put a couple of apartments and hopefully get a tenant downstairs that will need a retail space or an office building, a real estate offices, et cetera, down the road. But initially, this is a good start to get this building, productive building, into the neighborhood, into the town. And hopefully down the road, it will go further and grow. But at this stage, leaving it as is and by not getting the variance for this, we're back to square one. We're gonna be sitting there waiting, hopefully we get a tenant. Like I said, we prefer to rent it as commercial, we really do. But the problem is there are no demand. And I'm sure you're familiar, you, like you and I, we know what the internet did. And, I mean, the online shopping and everything else reduced the demand for retail spaces, offices, people working from home now, et cetera, et cetera. So this is where we are and we hope that this board will be cooperative with us.
Any questions for? So let me just read this letter into the record, just so we have this. So it's dated August 1st, 2024. It's from Realty Holding Company and it's to the zoning board, Town of Beekman. And the letter reads, gentlemen, I write this letter in support of Jet Management's variance for their apartments of less than 800 square feet in gross area. There's an acute need for affordable housing. Thus, a smaller gross square foot apartment should be more affordable than any of their larger competitors. It seems that Jet will supply an underserved population with a chance of affordable housing. And it's signed very truly yours, Dennis J. Toad?
Going Todd.
Todd? Okay, thank you.
We have no idea who he is. Like I said, we're very appreciative.
Got it.
Yeah, when we notify the neighbors.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, so I'd like to...
I think there was testimony just at the prior meetings that one of the apartments is in use and was a prior not conforming.
Yes, it's legally in existence, let's put it that way.
What are the other two?
They were offices, occupied as offices, right? There was no retail stores.
They were, you know, back-to-back. That's the way it was when I acquired it, it was empty. I don't know what it was, I know it was, I never met the previous owner, but it was a plumbing company.
There was a, there's a new member here today and she's hearing for the first time some of this evidence. So there was, each of these spaces are separately metered?
Yes, from day one, they've been separated metered.
This was four meters there.
And can you refresh everybody's recollection about the cost to take down these masonry walls that are separating each place?
Okay, if we are to take down the masonry walls, it's a little bit more involved in that matching the floors, finishing the floors, removing one of the kitchens to convert it to an apartment. We have a breakdown on the whole cost, especially that wall is double masonry wall and has the electrical services in there, so the electrical service has to be relocated too. We estimated the cost to be at roughly around $10,000 square feet, $10,000, sorry. Maybe 12, somewhere around, you have 14,000. The estimated cost of construction to convert into one apartment. But the return on investment will put us back in the red. You know, I mean, so we invested money to do the changes. And when the final, when we rent them, I mean, two bedroom apartment versus one bedroom, we're talking about that $300, $400 difference in rental. It's not gonna be double where two apartments will bring you that kind of an income. And this is where the hardship really comes. You know, it's having, and also one big apartment being down for a couple of months, it's like being two apartments vacant at the same time. So in overall, as an investment, which is, this is an investment piece of property. It's a business piece of property. It will not feasible, you know. If we are unable to do three apartments, then it's really, it's creating additional financial hardship on the owner from the day one of the construction and then during the operating process.
Is there something that you have to submit to the board that you're able to share with us? I know we said that you shared a number with us. Is there anything that you can share with us?
We have an estimate.
In that wall?
No, no, I'm saying in terms of a written...
On paper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go. Thank you very much.
This is, I know it's the, this is without the, there's a few copies there.
Okay.
And one of the main things there is the electrical panel for that one apartment. It's in that wall. All those wires will have to go back.
So you have utilities besides that?
Yes.
Which would be the rest of the...
Yep.
I think there was, remind the board that there was evidence before this board that these were, these masonry walls were load-bearing walls.
Jim, those masonry walls are load-bearing, right? So it's not just...
Yes, they are, yes, they are.
Okay.
Load-bearing and I think what happened there was one part of the building was one time and then they had it. So it's a double block wall.
Back-to-back.
And the roofs are different height at that point.
Yep.
It's definitely a load-bearing and both sides. So supporting, there'll be two separate beams supporting the two roofs, not a single one. It's, is it doable? Yes, it's doable, but it's pretty complicated.
It would require additional engineering costs.
Correct.
But that's not even in here, getting two different beams.
I was about to put this here up there for...
Yeah, you should have put that in.
Well, I'm not sure, you know, they have to do the structural weight loads and...
He's counting on his brother-in-law doing this.
Carl gave us a lot of information on that last month. He did a good job at explaining, you know, what he, what he had laid out, if he had to change it.
Even if it were to change, if I only had two, I'd be running on the menu.
To pay the note, the taxes and everything, it's not covered?
It's in there.
Yes.
And then if I had one vacancy, then I'm, you know...
For a couple of months, right? Yep. Okay, anybody, we, all the parking is up front?
Yes, we still have to work with the planning board on the parking and then in traffic circulation and everything else. You know, we not, you know, going from here, we're not done. We still gotta go back to the planning board and comply with all the town requirements for, you know, zoning, for planning. Right now, we have more parking than we need. We have more septic system that we need. It's been approved by the Dutchess County Health Department.
Beautiful.
Do you wanna make a motion, open the public hearing?
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to open this for public comment.
Second?
Vocal, Stella.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Linda.
Yeah. Phil, aye. All right. Anyone from the public wanna make a comment? Not seeing anyone. I'm gonna make a motion to close public comment.
Second?
Vocal, Stella. I'm done.
Aye. Aye. All right, so I'd like to go through the, the elements of the, the components here of the consideration and just walk through them and just invite the other board members to comment if they have anything that they wanna say.
So what I would suggest is have you, Mr. Chairman, read the criteria and interject your opinion and then go down the row.
Sure. Okay, so the first item here, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the nearby properties be created by granting the variance?
Are you going to each of us?
He's gonna put his first. Yeah. So I don't think I really have anything on that one.
Yeah, so looking at the area and that section of Route 55, the way it's been for the last 40 years anyhow, is pretty much the same as it's been, what you see right now, except for the addition of Dollar General and some of the buildings that have been taken down. That stretch is identical to what it's been. So it's not gonna change. That building is existing, it's been existing. There's nothing on the inside work that you've done that's gonna change the outside. So it wouldn't be an undesirable from the vantage point of viewing it from the street because the outside of the building hasn't changed. So I don't see where number one would, would create an undesirable change to it. Linda?
I agree.
Stella?
What I, absolutely, I agree. And also, just looking at this, I was looking at the new apartments, individual measurements.
Yes.
And actually, each room, to me, it's a good size. There are many, many homes with those same kind of measurements in the living room and even bedrooms.
Exactly. They all, they all very comfortable living, although they're substantial from the zoning requirements of the town.
Actually, the least amount in the bedroom would be the original. So I don't see these two new ones as a negative.
All right, number two. So second, can the desired result be achieved by some other means than granting a variance? So I guess it depends what the desired result is. Obviously, right now, the building is a mixed-use building. And so the goal is to have the space that can't be now rented commercially be used for residential. And we have here a quote for what it would cost to turn the two commercial spaces into one apartment that would be in compliance with zoning. So I guess in that sense, the result could be achieved without a variance?
I'm not so sure because the existing apartment is pre-existing, non-conforming, it's still...
So that doesn't need a variance?
Correct, but it's still non-conforming, it's still be substantial.
No, I'm, but I'm saying, we're not considering that apartment.
Oh, okay.
We're not voting on that because that's existing, it's grandfathered in. So it's just the two commercial spaces, yep.
This is where you would wanna take a cost feasibility analysis of whether the variance is feasible to the applicant.
So when, when we read that, can the desired result? The desired result being we need three, three apartments in there. That's what's desired.
Yes.
We can achieve that without granting a variance because there's not enough square footage on that building regardless. So honestly, the desired result, what you're looking for, can't be without a grant of variance.
I agree.
Item number three is the variance substantial. So I don't think it's substantial particularly.
I don't think it's substantial.
So this one, I'm gonna lean on Craig for it because the variance is only like 16% of what they need, but we're doing it as a bulk and not individual.
Bulk area square footage is, according to the applicant, 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, 2,000.
2,010.
Needed 24?
You need 2,400, so that's a variance of about 16%.
Okay, just so we're clear on that one. You know, when you look at it that way, it's, it's really not substantial. And when I, when I look in that particular area, the apartments across the street and Shady Lane Trailer Park being right there, especially with trailers, I think I touched on that before. There, most of them are somewhere between 14 feet wide and 12 feet wide. And they go anywhere from 42 to 47 feet long. It's really not a lot of square footage, you know. And we've touched on earlier that the accessory apartments are allowed 400 square feet for an apartment. But because you're in town center zoning, that's where the 800 comes in.
Correct.
So honestly, throughout the town, you can have 400 square feet. It's just that zoning, yes, town center zoning is kind of, and it's not the first time that it's tripped us up, you know. The vision when that came in is, not that it's different or deviated, but the mixed use that's there, you know, means that we have to help applicants, you know, stay afloat and stay operational on that stretch, you know. So I don't, personally, I don't think this, the variance is substantial.
I don't either.
No, I think it's fine. I think it's, yeah. Makes sense, it works.
Yeah.
Next item, will the variance have an adverse effect of impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? I don't, I don't have any comment.
No, we had touched on this in this first two meetings. The building is exactly the same, the square footage hasn't changed. The septic, we had already mentioned that it was approved by the Dutchess County Department of Health. And physically, there is not an appearance-wise that is gonna change. So I don't see the impact having been any different, not as far as this board's concerned.
It's a type 2. There's the carbon, the carbon footprint is not going to increase.
Correct, because it was already three, right, it was already three spaces, yes.
It's not in a wetlands area.
No.
And there's no flood.
No flood zone, no.
Yeah, we're not encroaching on anything outside of the building that was already there, right?
And also, as it exists, it's already outside the wetland, but far as outside the flood zone.
Any drainage concerns can be addressed at the planning board level?
Correct.
Okay, and any comment?
Yeah, okay.
And then finally, is the alleged hardship self-created? So this was a building that had two commercial units and one residential unit when it was purchased. So from my perspective, it is self-created in the sense that we wouldn't be here with a variance if it wouldn't be to turn those commercial units into residential. If we were continuing to use them as commercial.
We would love, like I said, we would love to use them as commercial.
Understood.
We are unable to.
Understood.
Yeah, so this is always one of those odd questions. But generally, I always think of almost, this question is almost, almost always being self-created. That doesn't mean we're not here to help you get relief from the code. But generally, when I look at it, I always say, somebody purchased it with a idea in mind. If that idea doesn't work, it's nobody's fault.
You're absolutely right.
And, but, and when I tell you this, I mean this. It doesn't mean we won't help you seek relief and you shouldn't be able to come before us. It's just there are areas that, that it's not self-created. One of being which has happened in the town center because before town center zoning, that zoning didn't exist. I mean, of course, you've bought it since it was town center zoning. But if you'd have bought it prior to that and it changed to this, it wouldn't be self-created, correct? Right? And then, of course, eminent domain sucking up property and moving your building closer to roads and change in zoning wouldn't be your fault, you know. So when it happens like that, it's like somebody buying a house and outgrowing it with their family and wanting to expand, well, it's not my fault. Well, so, but that, when I say that and I mean that, that doesn't mean we're not here to help you seek relief or try to understand if we can.
Okay.
I think the same thing. It is self-created, but not, I mean, when you got it, you're like, I'm not gonna be able to rent this to retail, which is totally understandable. So I agree.
Yeah, I'm good, yeah.
All right, great. Any questions from any of the board members?
I think they've answered over the last... I think they've answered over the last three months. I think we've got about everything we could beat out of them. And we do appreciate all the information and help.
And I appreciate your love and help.
Yep. Thank you.
I understand that.
It, we're learning in this process as well, and thank you for, for your patience. Just one clarification on the chart that you gave us. So you indicate here, uh, you know, one apartment, uh, monthly and then yearly, one apartment, two, two apartment and three apartment. For the two apartments, your, I just want to make sure I understand, the figure that you have here is the same figure you're applying as if you had one smaller apartment, two, two...
I think, yeah, one, the first one is a monthly, the very first of one apartment?
Got, I got that. But I mean, the, your, the numbers you're u- using here are as if the second, much larger apartment or significantly larger apartment would get the same rent as the existing apartment. Do I read that correct?
About the same size. The C and A are about the same size. So I, I, that's how I based it on, the same rent. They're both, I think they're affiliated like fifteen hundred for, for apartment C, and I don't know if I forget that, but...
No, no, that's fine. I, I just wanted to clarify. So right now, pre-existing apartment A is six hundred thirty-four square feet. And then you're proposing B at four eighty-six, nearly five hundred, and C at six fifty-five. So that gets me to close, like twelve hundred-ish. Uh, so that's double the size of A. Do I have that correct?
No. The, the, B and C will be a total of a little bit over a thousand by eleven hundred square feet. Yes. And where apartment A is six hundred thirty-four.
Right. So if we combined B and C, we would be at eleven...
Eleven hundred square feet, basically. Yeah.
Just a little over eleven hundred. And apartment A is six hundred thirty-four. Yeah? So that's, I just wanted to confirm. So the figures here for two apartments are, uh, factoring a rent for combined B and C that would be equivalent to what you're seeking for A. Got it? Okay. Any, any other question?
No.
Okay. It's ready to...
Make a vote out? I'd like to make motion to vote on this?
Sure.
Second.
Second?
Okay. The one variance that you're considering is the, um, is, is the area variance to convert the three spaces into three apart, substandard apartments for, that would, uh, be the variance that is being sought, and that's for your consideration. That's the only variance for your consideration.
All right. Vocal?
What was the motion? Can you repeat the motion?
The, the, you're for your consideration. Okay. Is the area variance, uh, relieving the applicant from, uh, the eight hundred square foot minimum square footage per apartment to the square footage that it exists today?
So we're gonna make it?
So we should...
You're gonna make a motion to, uh, approve or deny?
So I'd like to...
Application as, as Craig is just...
Make a motion to approve or deny the application as stated by counsel.
I'm for approval.
I'm for approval.
Who was the second?
Second. I'm sorry.
All right.
All right.
Call in favor.
Call in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna say no, but I think we have...
We have votes to get through. Three to one.
Yep.
Okay. So you, you said...
I said...
So it's...
Three?
So three one?
Three, yes.
Three one.
One, no.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great evening. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for hanging in there with us.
And now we go back to the planning board, and we iron out the rest of the stuff.
All right. Yes.
Thank you and have luck to you.
Yes. Thank you very much. Take care of us.
Hi.
Good night.
I'll let you know. Bout over.
'Cause I didn't, I probably didn't have any picture how to get through the, the bulk bearings or individual ones.
I think they sound like the two little quarters.
Get it.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Motion to adjourn?
Second, third, fourth, and fifth.
Vocal? Aye.
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 Tell me when you're getting up, 'cause I don't want to...